First order of business is approval of the minutes of the October fifth, two thousand twenty work session. Open for motion, motion by Commissioner Buckner to have a second, second by Commissioner Dawson. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, vote with stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Next item of business, committee reports. Any committees to report? Hearing none. The next item of business is appointments. First appointment is Board of Zoning and Appeals reappointment. Mr. David Smith serves on that. He's one of the five board members on that, and I'd like to submit his name to move on to regular session to be reappointed. Motion by Commissioner Beatty, second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion?
How long did they serve? How long did they change?
Mr. Arnold.
It's five years.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions? Hearing none. All in favor, vote with stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. First item of new business is quarterly financial reports, all funds except schools. Mr. Hall.
Thank you, Mayor. I've just got a few notes here. I'm gonna read through the, each of these funds here that I oversee, or we oversee in general government here. The general fund here, these are the first quarters for July, August, and September, first quarter of the year, so there's not much action that's going on, there's not much in the revenues. Just for the revenues, for example, it's been twenty-five percent of the year is the theory behind this. Eleven percent of revenues have been brought in, so property tax hasn't even started being collected yet, so the revenues are down. The only thing I saw is the, for example, county attorneys' fees are up, Mr. Reagan here, he's tearing it up out there, you know. Most of this right here is gonna be fuel depot type of work, they're having to do a lot of work with that right there. Elections Department is the only thing that I saw that was up a little bit. Election's coming up tomorrow. So those type of things I saw right there inside the county general, not picking on Mr. Reagan at all right there though. But that's an example of something that's really going on right now in our county. The landfill right now, revenues are eighteen percent, expenditures eighteen percent, that right there is kinda mirroring. There is no county property tax in that fund, it's all going across the scale and that type of thing. Drug control, I'm gonna take my glasses off here, can't see. The only thing I saw in drug control, confiscations are up, so that's a revenue that we budgeted for forty thousand, eighty thousand's been collected, so we're above that. That's the only thing I saw that even caught my eye, and drug control, one twenty-two. And this is the quarterly report, first quarter. Highway, revenues are a little bit ahead of twenty-five percent, the theory there again is thirty-one percent, expenditures are only at fifteen percent. So you see again, not a whole lot goes on in the first quarter of the year. Debt service fund, revenues are up to forty-seven percent, expenditures at forty-six percent, kinda even. The only thing there is, we did the debt refunding for the new government building out there, the new library, we call it, that type of thing, so that's just kinda in and out money there, but we do have, wheel taxes still in that, wheel taxes at four hundred fifteen thousand, and that also has the adequate facilities taxes also in that fund too. That's still kicking along pretty good, so that's making that fund. There is some property tax in that fund also, but again, that's not even being collected yet, so that's not affecting that fund. Capital projects fund, not much going on in that fund also, so really nothing, that's coming along kinda even like right now. And the only other fund for the quarterly reports is the community development industrial park, let's see here, revenues are at twenty-five percent, which is theoretically proper, and expenditures at eighteen percent. So there's not a whole lot going on, first quarter of the year right there, like I said, property tax is not even being collected right now, so that's just some of the stuff I just wanted to bring to your attention for the quarterly reports.
Any questions, Mr. Hall, Mr. Eby?
Hey, what about the hospitality tax? Is that, do we seem to think that's gonna be down this year, or do we know?
That was, that's fund one seventy-two, that was that last one right there that I just discussed right there, and it's at twenty-five percent, so, and we budgeted four hundred fifty thousand, which is a little bit down than what we usually do, and it's at twenty-one percent, but it's running a month behind.
Gotcha.
So it may be running about twenty-five percent, so it might be slightly off a little bit, but it's running about where we budgeted, so.
Okay.
So we're, as long as we hit the budget, we'll be okay on it.
Any other question, Mr. Hall? Open the floor for a motion to move this on to regular session. Motion by Commissioner Reed, second by Commissioner Simkins. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, vote with stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Next item is amendments, all funds except schools. Mr. Hall.
Yeah, we're doing amendments too, and based on what I did with the quarterly reports here, I did some amendments here on general fund, I'm just looking here, there's not a whole lot, now we'll keep these open with, if you'll send these on to two weeks from now, I'll have some more, and I'll send these out to you, but right now, I'm just kinda looking here at the few that I did, see if there's anything. I have a few COVID nineteen items that I've included, like a COVID revenue, ninety-eight thousand dollars, we're getting some money back for some expenditures that we'll have, so ninety-eight thousand for that, let's see, I got some presidential preference primary, we're getting some money back in. Courthouse security grants, we also have, we're getting a little bit of money, nineteen hundred dollars, and I just moved some money around from one spot to another. I've put some money back in, where we've drawn down some money for the Justice Center and that type of thing, so that's in the general fund. Fund one sixteen, sale of equipment that we didn't budget for, I've included that, we made eight thousand dollars on some equipment for one sixteen.
It's one sixteen, is that?
That's the landfill, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for catching me on that, Mayor, I act like everybody knows what that means. We don't have any amendments for the bridge fund, highway department, we got some disaster relief money from fiscal year nineteen, it generally takes about two years to get disaster relief fund, right? Mr. Fisher? And we just got that hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars back from, back in about two years ago, so that's gonna hit the highway department, and that was all that, that's all that we have in amendment there for right now, like I said, two weeks from now, I may have some more. Let's see here, one fifty-one fund, which is debt service, let's see. Let's see, I do have something there, if I can get my hand to turn it.
I've got the road barring, is that what you're including on?
Yeah, that's the refunding there, yeah.
That'll be item number four, and I'll go in detail on that.
You wanna add something to that?
No, I'll just, I'll take care of that under item four.
Okay, yeah, that's what I've done there, on the amendment for that, is where we did the refunding or refinancing of that, so that right there, take care of that. Let's see here, okay, and then the capital projects, I do have some amendments there, we added seven cents, I believe was the amount we added for capital projects, we did a, we added seven cents of property tax, and when you add property tax to a fund, you also get prior year's property tax, like trustees collections for prior years, trustees collections, bankruptcy, clerk and masters prior years, interest and penalty and that type of thing from prior years, we did not add that, so I amended that, so we start collecting prior year's monies, so I've added those, that's the monies there, and then it looks to be about twenty thousand dollars, twenty-seven thousand dollars actually, so I've added those to the capital projects funds, which are related to prior years, you get those prior year's monies, and that looks like that's all I've added to that for capital projects for those amendments. And I added a new revenue code for federal through state for USDA for twenty thousand dollars, and the community development fund one seventy-two that we get, so there's a few, few items right there I wanted to bring to your attention, and I may have more two weeks from now, but I will send those out to you if I do have them, and you'll be able to see that, I'll highlight them on your file if I do have any changes from what I have right now. So if you would, I'd like to get those sent on to two weeks from now.
What did we mostly have in there? I think y'all picked it up along the way, because it's early in the year to do amendments, so there's some obvious things I'll be talking about later. Most of those are revenue lines, so it's, revenues have come in that have adjusted up, so Mr. Hall's doing those as we go, so we'll have a better picture of that, so it's not a lot of expenses, it's more money that we're collecting, so that's good news. Any question, Mr. Hall? Hearing none. Open floor, motion to move this on to the regular session. Motion by Commissioner Eby, second by Commissioner McElwain. Any discussion? Any questions for Mr. Hall? Hearing none. All in favor, vote with stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hall.
Thank you.
Next item is item number three, it's getting down to that point, the old tis the season, the holiday schedule, it's gonna look like the last ten that I've been involved in, so there's twelve holidays on there, it's up to the commission to approve those every year, and just take a look at those, we forego a holiday, and there's not a October holiday, but historically, there's always been the day after Thanksgiving, and then two days at Christmas, Christmas I believe is on a, will be on a Sunday or Saturday next year, so the two dates will be the prior dates on the Thursday and Friday before. That's standard, that's what we've always done here, and I'll open the floor for a motion to move that on to regular session. Motion by Commissioner Shepard, second by Commissioner Williams. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, vote with stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item number four, what Mr. Hall was speaking of earlier, this is some revenue we're looking to move, to look at getting some more roads paved. From the refunding and the things that we've done over the past several years, we, as y'all are all aware, and I think most of you are aware, and if you're not, I'll get you that, we have a debt service projection out through the year two thousand forty-one, so we're kinda trying to anticipate some borrowings that'll have to be done. The next large borrowing, you know, we had money in this fund, that's why we did not have to raise taxes to build a school, and we did not have to raise taxes to build the Justice Center, so those are all accounted for inside this one fund. They get their, revenues come from a certain group of revenues that go in there, property tax being one of the key components. All that being said, the next, and I'll go with y'all on that, in about fiscal year twenty-five, there'll be enough money, about thirty-two and a half million dollars available, if it's that money's needed to build, be, out there to be, to build for schools, is what we discussed. There's also, we're anticipating in that similar time, that we'll need to do some expansion of the jail, the jail will be ten years old at that time, and well, some expansion there, we're looking about, estimating about a five million dollar project in probably another five or six years to enclose some of the courtyards and turn those into sales, so we have actually been in that, jail took it officially in June of two thousand eleven, I think, is that right, Chief Hall? So it's maintained, but of course, as the county grows, the folks that need to spend some extra time in there, that also grows too. So, all that being said, we've got some good projection on that, but the thing that we've noticed, and we anticipated before closing the budget out last year, was that we'd have some extra funds in debt service to take care of some immediate needs. One of the immediate needs that we've all discussed, I think with most all of y'all individually, is about paving roads, and trying to get the road paving caught up in the county. We've done a very good job on that with the funds y'all have allowed, the extra money through the gas tax, and what Mr. Burgess and Mr. Hodges have been able to do at the highway department. Again, I asked Mr. Burgess and Mr. Hodges to come up with a list where we could look at getting a lot of these roads done, I'm gonna give you a list here, it's a working list, we have it broken down by road names, but also have by commission districts, so you can look at exactly what's in your district. As I'm telling you, this is a working document here, if there's things you want to change, Mr. Burgess, Mr. Hodges, myself, we're open for any suggestion on that, but the ideal of this, these are all roads that are non-state aid roads. State aid roads are the ones that basically connect to state highways, that funding comes from a different source than the state government, but this is actual Dixon County roads are paid by Dixon County, but at this point in time, this list contains about forty-one miles of roads to be paved, that's a bunch of roads, but if y'all would pass that out and just take a look at it, because what we're asking tonight is to move this idea on to regular session, because to get this done, this is roughly about a, this is a little smaller than two million dollars to do that, but we're in a position where we have enough money in debt service fund to get about two million dollars to pave. Now typically, in a budget year, if we had extra money in fund, we'd simply ask for you to vote and move it to a different fund, but on debt service, you can't do that, it's more defined, so what we're asking for is, is to borrow the money out of that, two million dollars, and then repay it before the end of the fiscal year. That's the legal and correct way to do it, to make sure that fund's integrity stays in place. But that's a list, it's a little heavier toward the rural end of the, northern end of the county, the western end, if you look at that, but that's where all the county roads are, Burns, White Bluff, City of Dixon, the other cities take care of theirs, so if there's any suggestions you'd like to make, I know Mr. Burgess, Mr. Hodges would be glad to stay around after the meeting to talk about these for your districts, and see what kind of, what kind of different work you want to do. I think Commissioner Reed has spoken of another project, I think they're actually working on out of the funds they already have on that, so if you, there may be a couple of these roads that y'all have mentioned to me that are not included here, because Mr. Burgess and Mr. Hodges are taking care of those another way. What was the name of the road in White Bluff that Commissioner Reed asked about?
I'm not familiar with it.
So that would be complete, so that's not on this list, so these are additional ones on there. But if y'all take a look at it, that's the best efforts of a lot of us riding around the county, identifying roads, and more importantly, asking y'all, because out in y'all's areas, y'all know your roads, you know what needs to be done, but if y'all take a look at that, but what I'm asking for tonight is to have this moved on to the regular session, but with borrowing is what we're asking for, we can borrow around two percent money right now, which is relatively cheap, no, it's really cheap, it's not relative, it is cheap, and have that loan, have it for six months, and have it paid off on June the first, before the end of the fiscal year comes, so that's what we're looking for tonight, so I'll be glad to answer any questions, but if not, I'll entertain a motion to move this to regular session. Motion by Commissioner McElwain, second by Commissioner Eby, to move this to regular session. Any other questions or comments?
We're gonna get sober and talk to some of the official, and we've been with my recommendation back to you.
If you could, and sooner the better on that, we, again, if you look at this, on the total, it's forty-one miles that we think we can get done for less than two million dollars, there's gonna be some cushion there, but we don't want to overpromise and underdeliver, we want to do it the, we want to make sure we underpromise and overdeliver, so, but yeah, please let me know as soon as you can, because we can get that in there, and we'll start the bidding process over in, either in December or January to get the roads bid out. Mr. Burgess is gonna do some of the roads, but an effort to get these done quickly, the bigger, longer roads, we're gonna look at bidding those out to get some help from pavers that we could do that, so we can get it done fast. God knows a lot of roads, especially in the northern end of the county, that they've been under, under maintenance over time, so this is gonna be an opportunity for us really kinda get ahead of this thing.
I have one question, yeah, Mr. Burgess.
Sure.
Couple miles of county road.
Eight hundred and something, seven hundred and forty-eight. That's, that's continuously growing, with subdivisions coming in and stuff like it.
Any other questions? Hearing none. Did I get a motion a second on this? Yes, I did. I do have a proper motion, a second. Any questions? Hearing none. All in favor, vote with stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Next item is Homeland Security Grant, EMA, a hundred percent reimbursement grant, an amount of twenty thousand eight hundred dollars. Mr. Fisher.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. We received notification about the third week of October that we were approved for a Homeland Security Grant. It's in the amount of twenty thousand eight hundred and thirty-five dollars, this is the one that's one hundred percent reimbursement, we purchase all the products, submit all the invoices, and they reimburse us within two or three weeks. With this grant, we plan on purchasing some emergency response equipment and public education materials, as well as some security controls at the EOC.
It's hundred percent grant, typically that gets my attention the very first day. Open floor for motion. Motion by Commissioner Spicer, second by Commissioner Eby. To have a sec, oh, have you opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Fisher. Next item of business, speed limit for Harmon Springs Road and Fairview Road. Commissioner Williams.
Yes, I've had some calls, the lower, I guess make the post these speed limits on both of these roads, and most everybody's asked for thirty-five, I said they could live with forty, so maybe, I guess leave it up, maybe Chief, or Burgess, I guess been booked from them, I drove, I think, thirty-five, forty is reasonable, but I was getting, come up with one of those, get a motion.
So that's typical, what we do is ask highway and law enforcement both to look at it, so if that's fine with y'all, I'll take that as a motion for Commissioner Williams to have a second, second by Commissioner Shepard. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, vote with stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item number nine, rename portion of Pruitt Road. Commissioner Eby.
Yeah, I was made aware that especially, I think the east side on Pruitt Road, a lot of the, because of all the building that's going on, there's, all the numbers are all messed up, and I got with Greg Bone about it, and he can go through the air and renumber everything, and we may rename, like East Pruitt Road and West Pruitt Road, but I got with, they have a committee over there that, because of the fact that UPS and some of those, I really get confused about where these addresses are, because they're all just mixed up all over that whole road, so we're wanting to rename that and redo all the addresses.
I'll take that as a motion of Commissioner Eby to have a second. Second, Commissioner Buckner. Any questions for Commissioner Eby? Now this, is this generated from you and your district, or from the nine-one-one?
People in the district, and then I got with Greg Bone, and some of the citizens out there have also contacted me about trying to get this done, and he's in agreement with it being done.
Is there county road names and nine-one-one approval, is there any other steps in that other than this body?
No, that's it, and I did, Commissioner Eby did contact me, and I also spoke with Mr. Bone, and my understanding is, and it could have changed, but I think he's only wanting to name the portion of Pruitt Road that's east of CCC Road to east Pruitt Road, and then, as Commissioner Eby said, they're gonna do some renumbering along there, but I don't think it requires anything else.
All right, thank you. Have a proper motion, a second. Any other questions? Any questions? Hearing none. All in favor, vote with stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Under other business, bond for county medical examiner, Dr. Kyle Moore, is all of our officials, they have to be bonded, and that's just a housekeeping measure here, I'll open the floor for a motion. Motion by Commissioner Eby, to have a second. Second by Commissioner Reed. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, vote with stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Any other business come from commissioners? Any announcements? As you see, I have two here, any other announcements? First announcement is the County Agriculture Extension Committee will meet on Monday, November ninth, at two thousand twenty, at seven PM, the community meeting room of the Dixon County Government Building, located at three oh three Hensley Drive, Dixon, Tennessee. The third one, I do have the final one, but I also want to point out again, two weeks from yesterday, on Sunday, November fifteenth, we'll have the open house of the Justice Center, so that will be before we meet next time. That will be between one and five. I don't think we're doing anything overly special on that, a ribbon cutting or anything like that, so unless I'm told by somebody else we need to, I'd just rather open the door and let everybody come look at it. Please encourage everyone to come look at it, I know y'all will, it's something to be very proud of, it's a courtroom for today, but it's built for courtrooms for the future too, we're hoping this will take care of business for another thirty years or so in Dixon County, so it's, it's nice, it's something to be proud of, make sure y'all, your constituents are aware of it, because this building, as you'll see it goes in, the plaque's dedicated to the citizens, taxpayers of Dixon County, that's who it's made for, and that's who provided, and that's the most important, is to, as I say it. The building will be opened up completely, where all areas other than technical, electronic areas, well, those will be secure, but everything else will be open, including the holding cells and everything, so we want everybody to get a chance to see it, because once we're done on that, on that Sunday, on Monday, the sixteenth, it'll go into a full secure mode after that, and only people with security levels that work in there, or become visitors in there to do business through the back door, will be the ones allowed in the back, everybody else will be the public interest, so this is a one-time opportunity, got a four-hour window to do it, and I think I've already told everybody the Titans play on Thursday night, so there's no Titan football to, you get interrupted on that, so you can come stay for the whole four hours if you want to. Commissioner Eby?
When are the courts made up there?
We haven't prepared, where it's open for business on Monday, November thirtieth, so that's the date it goes. You're gonna see some hiccups on the week of Thanksgiving, there, the courts will be open for business here on Monday, on that Tuesday and Wednesday. The hiccup you may notice county-wide will be, is that our phone system will be changing over, all those numbers here will move over there, but we're also, as y'all may recall, that we were getting new phone system for all the buildings, and they're still scheduled to be done on that same date, Mr. Bayer? Yeah, so we'll have a complete new phone system, so the, if you want to get nostalgic, walk around, you can look at a nineteen eighties phone system and kinda hold it and love it, because it's about to go away. Commissioner Reed?
How many square feet is?
All total, roughly, it's a little over seventy thousand square feet.
Does it have a jail in it?
It's got a holding cells in the bottom that, and I can't tell you exactly how many, but it's set up for women, men, juveniles, to keep them separated, and then there's holding cells on each floor above that, where, and they're on elevator, so the prisoners can be carried up and down in a secured way, and never mentioned, but it looks like a mini jail to me in the bottom.
That's the one room I don't want to go to.
I don't either. Although we'll get to tell you a story, last Friday night, when I was leaving, I, usually I'd try to make a lap around the building, and I'd already been down there at least twice last week, so when I drove by, something just told me, you might want to just stop by and look, and we had some guys working outside, but the alarm was going off in the building, and I said, well, that's odd, but all the doors were locked, something, one, it was in the Sally Port, and I stuck my head in there, the secure door on the inside, one of the firework workers had got left behind, so he had pulled the alarm, he was laying on the floor, scratching on the door at that point, I think he was emotionally and physically drained after two hours in that room alone. The people working outside, they said, well, we heard that, but we just thought they were working on something, so I guess if somebody loved him, they may have checked on by nine, nine-thirty, ten o'clock Friday night, so, so it's secure, we know the jail works, if you're in there, it actually works.
You said Sunday, one to five.
Sunday, one to five.
Fifteenth.
The fifteenth. And part of the deal on that is, we're gonna give our friends at Water Street time to get out from a day of church, but then we'll spend about four hours there, and then get out of their way before they have their nighttime services.
Mayor, will the, I know that we utilize parking lots down there for church, is that part of, is it being fixed, we gonna do something to put that kind of back in place?
Yeah, what we've, what we did, and it was done back early on, and I know we've covered a lot of miles since then, but we have an agreement with Water Street to use their parking lots, the both of them, and part of the agreement was, was the one that we would repay their parking lots after they're done, and I, is it a ten-year, it's a ten-year agreement with Water Street on that, it's very similar to what the City of Dixon did at the Methodist Church downtown on their parking lot, so we're gonna repave it and make it whole again, and other than an occasional funeral, we shouldn't have a lot of issues where we're doing business at the same time.
Also, I know trucks utilize the rest, their walk, barbecue, a lot of the semis, they couldn't turn it off at forty-nine, get to there, and there was some pavement damage there, done with those trucks, are we gonna fix that for them, or?
Yeah, we're gonna come back in there and work on that, and one of the things that the City of Charlotte's working on is a grant, which I understand they receive, about sidewalks down there around the building, and some works on the street, so we're gonna work with them to move forward, because, you know, Charlotte's a great neighbor to have here, and we work well together, so we make quite an investment here to help improve Charlotte, but Charlotte's been a good neighbor to us, and we're gonna make sure that we kind of at least found it like we bet it, leave it like we found it, or leave it better than we found it, so we're gonna take care of that.
Right.
Welcome. Any other questions? It's one of those deals, it didn't hit me yesterday, it was actually two weeks away, because, you know, we've been talking about this in earnest for about three years, and really worked on it for a couple of years, so it's finally here, and it's, it's something to be proud of, the citizens will have something they can use for a very long time, and right today, it's a little more than we need, but that was part of the deal, let's not just build for today, let's try to take care of tomorrow, because the- uh, the borrowing we did on that to build that, it, it seems, it is expensive, but with the way prices are going, it's going to look very cheap here in probably ten or fifteen years on what we did to get that building to this point, so, excited about it. Any other questions on any of that?
I'm, uh, about three times, since what it was six months ago, so.
Yeah, that's, that scared somebody so bad they dropped their stuff, I guess he's building something. Any other questions? If not, I'll go to the final announcement. The final announcement is, the next work session meeting will be on Monday, November sixteenth at seven PM. That's not right. It's not November sixteenth, that's our next regular session.
Right.
Well, we have a work session for December, that's December's work session.
Only, but that's on the, um, let me look.
Mayor, it's going to be the same night after the County Commission's regular calendar.
I don't, it's not that I don't trust y'all, I can't visualize my camera, I can't visualize my calendar to look at, because we do have something odd happening in December. Okay, that is, so that is the work, like you said, I got you. Because what we did, uh, on this, thank you for, everybody for catching it and keeping me straight, uh, we will have the work session, the December work session on that date, because if you look at December's calendar, we were set up to have a, uh, county, a work session on December seventh, and then a regular session on the twenty-first, but the idea we came up with last year, we didn't want to have a regular session on the twenty-first, because that's the week of Christmas, and in case any of y'all are going to take off early or anything, so that is correct. The work session for December will be on November sixteenth after our regular meeting. Then the next meeting will be on Monday, December fourteenth. That's, uh, usually that's on third Monday, it's going to be on second Monday of December, that way we get you off Christmas week if any of y'all were to leave town, and, on that,